...a civic orchestra, concerts at our Performing Arts Center, and cultural festivals are just some of the events we have year-round to promote the arts in our community.
We're a melting pot of different cultures and ethnicities, and we like to share traditions and cuisines through various events throughout the year. Pinellas Park is an inclusive community that also offers adaptive equipment for wounded veterans at the Wounded Warriors Abilities Ranch at Lurie Park, and adaptive playground equipment for handicapped children at Broderick Park. Both of these parks are open to the public and community to enjoy.
Residents of Pinellas Park are offered access to a wide array of amenities, such as recreation centers, fitness and sports facilities, shopping centers, a library, and more. Our recreational centers and library hosts all kinds of different programs, such as dance classes, crafting meetups, a book club, just the neighborhood. Pinellas Park is home to many different industries, making it a great place for residents to raise their families and work. Skyview Pool provides lessons for swimming and drowning prevention, and teens find Skyview Pool a great first opportunity for a first job.
Vamos!
Pinellas Park is simply centered near major highways and airports, which makes it ideal for businesses. The city offers many opportunities for organizations, such as exposure through our grand opening events, grants, to beautify the establishment, and resources to help a small business grow. The Pinellas Park Chamber of Commerce is another way businesses can benefit through their various networking events. In partnership with the city, the Pinellas Park Chambers of Commerce holds an annual backpack drive where thousands of residents come to receive free backpacks and school supplies. These few reasons among many more is why Pinellas Park was voted in the top 50 cities to start a small business in.
Visitors to Pinellas Park will find a wide variety of activities, ranging from outdoor scenery to live entertainment. Visitors can book a tour of the agricultural farm, explore a number of local parks and trails, go horseback riding, and more if they're in the mood for nature. The city hosts annual events for anyone to enjoy, such as the Chili Place Cook-Off, Country in the Park, Barbecue Cook-Off, rodeo, Christmas parade, and many more. Visitors will also be charmed by our authentic Vietnamese and Mexican cuisine that has been a staple in our community for many years.
Hi, I'm Jolie. I'm president of Teen Works Pinellas Park Youth Council, and I'm here today at City Hall to ask a few of our favorite role models what we do to make Pinellas Park great.
Hi, I'm here today with Bart, the city manager, and I'm here to ask how does Teen Works make Pinellas Park great?
So to start, having the youth in front of council and being able to come in and speak to us to hear you and hear how you guys speak and understand that involvement you have with the community, it makes us a better place, it makes us better. I'm hoping it makes you better. Future, that's the thing. You guys are the future. So the more we can get involved with you guys now and help you out, maybe help you through the next step in college and maybe bring you back to work here, that's the goal.
Hi, I'm here with Lee Evermeyer HR. I'm here to ask how did our teen council programs help you get to where you are today?
Hi, so where I am at today is I'm in the Human Resources Department as an HR supervisor. How it all started was I started as a youth participant at the Recreation Center. From there, I was able to volunteer throughout high school. I also became a summer seasonal junior counselor during the year that school was not in session. And then from there, I became a summer seasonal rec assistant after graduating high school. The opportunity presented itself where I was able to become a part-time employee and put myself through school. So throughout school, I eventually graduated my associate's degree and applied for an HR assistant job. I got the opportunity to transfer positions, and from there, I obtained my bachelor's degree and continued to grow and learn new avenues of the city. So it's all thankful for the program as a youth and participating in your opportunities here in the city and to develop my career.
Thank you.
As a part of our Teen Works program, we volunteer all around the city to help make our community better, from cleaning up parks to help maintaining gardening boxes at the Freedom Lake Park, from tending to the ag farm, hosting community food drives, and helping out at city events. We're also developing a youth citizens academy where teens will learn the insides on our local government and how they can make the community better. At Pinellas Park, our youth is important. They teach us that we're not only the leaders of today, but the leaders of today and tomorrow, and that's what makes our city so great.
Yeah!
As you can see from the video, the youth council highlighted so many things that make Pinellas Park great, like the events, recreational services, business opportunities, and more. And also, the youth council highlighted how they have contributed to the city as well. And the one comment that stood out to me that I thought was fantastic in the video was that these students are the leaders of today and tomorrow. And so I want to thank the youth council for your service to your community. And on behalf of the Florida League of Cities, I want to say thank you for the fantastic work of your youth council. And congratulations on being the recipient of the 2023 Youth Council Video Competition Award. Congratulations.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jolie. I'm the president of this lovely and award-winning group. I just wanted to say thank you to our volunteers. I appreciate everyone's commitment to this group, all the time and hours that you put in to help work for your city. We appreciate it, and more specifically, our board members. I appreciate all the extra commitment that you guys do for projects like this and just everything that you guys do to help everyone out, and it's amazing. I also wanted to thank our City of Pinellas Park videographers, Jessica and Kendrick. You guys are amazing, super great help creating the video. And they're just great people, cool people, and great people to know. Speaking of cool people, Jillian, Felix, and Rock. I appreciate you guys for, yes, please. I appreciate you guys for being dedicated leaders to this group and showing us everything that we need to know and making sure we're integrated within the city. I remember when we got the email to start doing this competition and the information about it, I think Bart sent it to us, so thank you for that. But I was so excited to do it because it's what I'm passionate about. It's what we are and what City of Pinellas Park is. And I was excited to do it. And yeah, it just made me realize how passionate I am about this group and how amazing everyone is and works together, and how amazing City of Pinellas Park is, and all that good stuff. So yes, thank you for being here. Thank you for creating the Florida League of Cities, well, the video competition for the Florida League of Cities. And thank you for giving us a voice. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Noah. I'm the vice president of this volunteer group. So I've been in this program for about probably five years now. And I never thought that I'd be up here doing something like this and receiving such an award. So it's just an honor to be up here and seeing all the hard work we put in for the past few months finally show through. So thank you.
Always proud of you guys, not just today, but in the past. I was telling her while the video was running how during COVID, you guys realized that you had fellow students, fellow young kids in the community that needed food, and you guys started your own canned cupboard. You guys have been since day one paying it forward to the community, so I'm very proud of you guys. Mr. Tracy Scofield? Or should I say Citizen of the Year? For those who did not attend the Pinellas Park Gateway Chamber of Commerce Gala, every January, as part of the gala, they pick out a Citizen of the Year. And so Tracy Scofield with the Police and Kids was picked out for all of the wonderful, hard work that he does in our community. And so it is with pleasure and on behalf of the city council to give you a key to the city as our Citizen of the Year and say thank you for always representing the City of Pinellas Park and everything that you do with your foundation. Want to talk about some upcoming events?
I really wanted to talk about how awesome the kids were.
Yes.
You know, we do this because of the kids, right? It's Police and Kids Foundation. We certainly support the families of fallen first responders that passed away. We lost a trooper on Friday. We took care of his family yesterday. But it's really about the kids. And you know, it's exciting because somebody's got to take over for me someday. So you know, you always hear people, oh my God, the world's going to heck in a handbasket, right? That's the concern, but then you see these guys, you go, we're gonna be okay. We'll be okay. You know, when our parents saw us when we were 15, 16, 17-year-olds ago, oh my God. You know, they were all worried about us. We're doing okay. And it's the same thing with them. They're gonna be fine, and they're gonna take care of us, and we're gonna be a great city forever because of kids like this. So very proud for them. We've got some events coming up. Certainly, we've got Country in the Park. We know that's coming up. We've got a Chris Jansen signed guitar. Anybody who wants to buy raffle tickets for the Chris Jansen guitar, he's our headliner band, which is awesome. And we're in the middle of our literacy campaign right now, trying to raise money for a vehicle. It's called the ARC, which stands for Active Random Kindness Bus. So the ARC will be not only in Pinellas Park, but it'll be all over Tampa Bay once we have it up and running. It's primary literacy in books, but it'll also be whatever else the people need. We'll hopefully be driving around diapers and backpacks and car seats and everything else that the needy families need in Tampa Bay. So we're blessed to be able to do it, and I appreciate it. And I'll try to do my best to earn every day of this. So thank you.
Thank you for your patience. We will start on our city council stuff. This is always the fun stuff that happens first. Wish we could do more of them. At this time, we do have a few quasi-judicial items. So before that, if there are any citizens that would like to come up and speak on any item that is not on the agenda this evening, now would be the time to do so. Seeing none. We do have a few quasi-judicial items, so I will ask that anybody that is going to speak on a quasi-judicial item to please stand and be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. People still standing up. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Section 2, Approval of Minutes. Councilmember Butler?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the regular council minutes of January 25th, 2024, as on file on the city's clerk's office. Second?
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion by city council on these items? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to Section 3, our public hearings. Item P1, Ordinance Number 4241.
Item P1, Ordinance Number 4241, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, establishing a public art program pursuant to the Public Art Plan, establishing a public art fund for the public art program and providing for the scope of public art funds, providing for the responsibilities of city council for the public art program and the designation of a public art program coordinator, providing for artist calls and ad hoc selection committees to acquire public art, providing for a maintenance plan for public art program artwork, providing for separability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Item P1, Ordinance Number 4241's public hearing, second and final reading. And there's a request for it to be tabled. So I will hear.
We'll need to open the public hearing but not close it.
Public hearing, second and final reading is open, and I will entertain a motion by city council to table.
And if I may, Mayor, just with the motion, we'll have to include a certain date, time, and place of the next meeting.
Councilmember Butler?
Yeah, I make a motion we table. Action, uh, ordinance number 4241 to the next scheduled meeting, which is? February 22nd. Isn't that something? Great.
What time?
Six o'clock.
City?
Yeah, right here in City. Right here in Passageway. You can't miss it.
The second concur. Vice Mayor? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I don't think I'll be here.
And since the public hearing was opened, it will be continued. Moving on to item P2, Ordinance Number 4242.
Thank you, Mayor. And before I read this title, I just wanted to make note that we do have an even number of council members present tonight. And so an even vote will operate as a denial. And so any applicant who wishes to have their item tabled may do so once their item is read. So item P2 is ordinance number 4242, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, amending the city's official zoning map by providing for a change in the zoning district from single-family residential R1 to Town Center TC for a certain parcel of land located at 7720 58th Street North and more particularly described in Exhibit A, which is attached tier two and made a part hereof, certifying consistency with the city's adopted comprehensive plan, providing for appeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith to the extent of such conflict, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Item P2, Ordinance Number 4242's public hearing, second and final reading. This is quasi-judicial. I am opening the public hearing and turning it over to Bob.
So we will move forward for the applicant's direction. My name is Bob Bernhardt, Senior Planner. I'll be presenting P2. This is case number REZ-2024-00001. It's a request to rezonate parcel at 7720 58th Street North from single-family residential R1 to Town Center TC zoning. It's an aerial map showing the property's location at 7720 58th Street North. Note that that red color that you're seeing has nothing to do with this case or the zoning designation. That's simply a layer from the property appraiser dataset. The land use designation here is Community Redevelopment District, CRD. As I mentioned, the zoning right now is single-family residential R1, and this is the flood insurance rate map. This is an excerpt from the adopted city center plan that shows with the red star there, the focus area of the city center plan. This property is located within that. To summarize, at this time, there are no proposed changes to the property or its current use, so this is just a rezoning. The subject property is located within the city center area and is specifically included in the focus area, as I mentioned. The proposed rezoning to Town Center allows for a greater variety of development opportunities. The property is well-positioned for transitional uses, linking the residential neighborhood with the higher-density development to the south. Planning and zoning commission review and city council approval of a site plan would be required for any future development. These would be advertised public hearings, so no by-right development would be permitted if this is approved. Staff findings are as follows. Rezoning from R1 TC is appropriate based on the zoning and land use designations in the vicinity. The proposal meets the intent of the proposed TC zoning for the Land Development Code, and the requested rezoning is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan, as well as the regulations of the Land Development Code. Staff recommend approval of this case. At the December 7, 2023, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, they recommend denial of this case. Thank you.
Thank you. City council, have any questions above? Is the applicant here this evening? If they'd like to share any additional information?
Yes. What do you mean?
Name and address for the record and whether you were sworn in or not.
My name is James Levin Good. Address 7720 58th Street North, and I was sworn in. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My wife and I would like to rezonate this to Town Center in order to possibly build townhomes or other missing middle housing, which is sorely needed in all areas, especially Pinellas Park. Again, we're thinking of possibly townhomes or also looking into courtyard cottages, courtyard buildings that would be very beneficial to the city. Have any questions?
And just for the record, Bob did stipulate, and you understand, that if you want to do anything with the property, you'll have to come back before planning and zoning and city council.
We understand that in Town Center, it does require a site development approval from both the Planning and Zoning Board and the city council, which actually protects the neighborhood from things that are not really appropriate. Again, our property is in the transition area. It's on the map of the Town Center Plan, which means that we could be a buffer between the St. Giles, which is high-density residential, and the other single-family homes to the east and north. So again, we're proposing something of just a slightly higher-density residential, like townhomes or the courtyard cottages, and think it would be a benefit to the city.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this item?
I apologize for the whites. I have chronic migraines.
Name and address for the record and whether you were sworn in or not.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Karen Estes. I live at 7760 58th Street North, two houses north of Donna and Jay. I have been sworn in. We were at the zoning meeting, and Jay has just talked about townhouses there. But at the zoning meeting, they said that the Town Center zoning could also allow for a motel or fast food, which obviously, we would not like to have two houses down from us. And we also asked the question, would that impact our value of our houses, the houses in that neighborhood? And the answer at that point was yes. So I can't speak in favor of that. I'm certainly in favor of affordable housing, but I don't think the houses that were built at 76th Avenue, the ones that look like little dominoes to me, were affordable housing. The cost of those things was pretty extraordinary, in my opinion, for mostly one-bedroom places. So I'm here to say I'm not in favor of rezoning. It just seems I disagree with the idea of the transition as well. That neighborhood is single-family residential. Across the street, you have the house that has a new roof, a new paint job. Most of us have done that same kind of thing to our houses, living in a neighborhood. So again, speaking against it. Thank you.
Before you walk away?
Sure.
If city council is to vote to move it from R1 to Town Center, if they do any buildings whatsoever, you know, where they have to bring in site plans and everything, it still has to go back before planning and zoning, and it still has to go before city council with any decision that they would make as to what they would like to develop the site into. So if city council does tonight vote to approve it being changed to Town Center, they still have to do the notices to the citizens in that area? I believe it's 500 feet, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
It's 300 feet.
300, okay. 300 feet around. So if something were to come forward, you would get notified to come back out and let city council know. And at the same time, you would be able to see what their plans were.
And what are cottages, courtyard cottages?
I would say that those are probably like little single-family homes or something like the one that we tore down that was there 70 years ago.
On 76th Avenue?
The ones that were on Park Boulevard that got torn down. What is it called? They were considered cottages. They were attached, and in the very center was where the grass and the sidewalk.
Friendship Bowl.
Yes, Friendship Bowl.
Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Joanne DeCare at 7760 58th Street. I'm with Karen.
And you were sworn in?
And I was sworn in. And I have just one question. With everything that's been said, if you approve it, that still devalues our home and the other homes in that block. According to the zoning committee we went to, once this zoning is changed, it will reduce the value of our homes. If that is true, then we're just screwed.
There's not a single member of that board has an appraisal's degree, okay?
That's true.
I can tell you from fact points, and I'm a Realtor for the last?
Yes, I know you are. And I'm just saying.
You're full of crap, okay?
I don't believe that, Rick.
You don't believe that all the improvements that we've done, all in our districts or anything, has decreased your value?
I think the zoning is very important in being your property sold.
Yeah.
The zoning, we just sold a house in St. Pete. We know. The zoning is very important.
Yes, it is.
And then, when your neighbor has a higher level, because it can be developed, than your property, it's only common sense that your value will go down.
Well, you know something? There's a little more common sense to appraising than that.
Well, I'm still in disapproval of this because I don't want my home devalued.
I don't want you to be influenced by someone that's not capable or qualified.
You're in zoning for a reason. There was a hope in it.
Well, guess what? There's a couple of them missing today. Okay, and I'll just leave it at that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Reed?
With the zone R1 and the property size that it is, what can they put on there without rezoning right now?
I believe the property is 0.65. So we'd have to look at the actual lots, like within the parcel, to see what they could do.
Within R1?
So in R1, it's 7.2 units an acre.
And you have to keep in mind, this would be an absolute. Oh, sorry. This would be an absolute maximum. So when you factor in parking area, landscaping, all these things, I mean, that's the absolute maximum if everything goes perfectly. There's no guarantee that could. Is there a 0.65? I believe. Does that sound right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
What was the maximum about? I didn't understand what this comment.
The way it's owned right now, you could have a three-point?
If the property stays zoned R1, they're asking how many lots they could get on it. So if it stays R1 and the property's 0.65, at 7.2 units an acre, they could get four units. So four townhomes, single-family homes on that lot currently as R1. So that's what that question was. But they would have to subdivide and come in for a PD more than likely.
And then how would that change under TC?
TC does allow for more units. But again, it would still have to come before the board to get approved.
Right. So as it sits now, they could put, they could put four houses on it. They could put two-story up to how many stories townhomes? What's our? What's our limit there?
It's 35 feet, so three stories.
They could put three-story houses on there. Correct?
Correct.
So, and do whatever they want without us ever saying a word. Am I correct in that? They could do that.
Yeah, as long as it meets dimensional code requirements, all that.
If it's rezoned TC, then they have to come in front of us regardless what they decide to do, if they decide to sell it to develop or anything. And we would have to approve the height, we would have to approve what they put on it, the size, and how many?
Density, all that, yeah.
The density and so forth. So right now, they could put, right?
Or... Yeah, this puts more controls.
I just wanted to clarify with the R1, and then with the TC, it gives us more control of what they can do with it.
Correct.
And what fits in the neighborhood and what's there. Right now, they could put, okay.
Correct.
Just wanted clarification. Thank you.
So the zoning...
Just for the record, when you're speaking, in the audience, you need to come up to the microphone so that it can be heard and so it can be recorded, and also so that the audience at home can hear you as well.
So at the zoning meeting, Jay did mention townhouses, but it was also mentioned, it could be a motel, it could be fast food.
Anything that he does, it has to come before City Council and has to go before planning and zoning.
I get that, but right now, even though you could put legally four houses there, that's not a motel, that's not fast food. Those are not things that would reduce the character of the neighborhood. That would be our concern. Thank you.
I think in R1, though, it does have a different zoning for being able to do with retail. I'm trying to remember what we talked about, Dunnett. You can do retail, you can do...
So...
R1's different.
In R1, you can do daycares, you can do educational institutions, place of worship, and then there is the home occupation where you can do...
So they could do retail underneath, they could have a home occupation bakery, they can do any of that underneath. If they wanted to do live work above, they could do that right now, how it's zoned. So if they wanted to put a restaurant in there, pretty much as it fits with zoning, correct me if I'm wrong, because we had this where they could put a strip center on an R1 piece of property, they could do that as it sits. But in TC, if it didn't fit the area, we could control that, right?
Yeah, in TC, you have more control of what could technically go there.
But R1, they could put...
R1, it is, it is more restricted to residential type uses, but there are things other than a single-family house that you could put on it.
I just wanted to clarify, because I thought that had come up on another piece of property, that leaving it R1, that they could, they pretty much can put a retail business in there. Okay.
Is there anybody else in the audience that hasn't spoke that would like to come up and ask any questions? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Councilmember Cadell.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we pass ordinance 4242, public hearing, second and final reading.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion by City Council? Roll call vote.
Yes, ma'am. Let's start with the... He's not here, okay. Councilman Butler.
Aye.
Councilman Cadell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Reed. Mayor Bradbury.
Nay.
Motion carries 3-1 with Mayor Bradbury voting down.
Moving on to item P3, conditional use.
Item P3, conditional use approval for residential care facility in the general commercial B1 zoning district.
Thank you. Item P3, conditional use, public hearing, first and final reading. It is quasi-judicial. I am opening the public hearing and turning it over to Bob. Gets it again.
Yes. All right. Thanks, everybody. I will also be presenting the variances associated with the conditional use case. So P3, P4, and P5, CU-0923-00012, VAR-1224-00002, and VAR-1224-00003. All right, so to break these down, the conditional use request is for approval for a residential care facility, an ALF assisted living facility in the general commercial B1 zoning district. The first variance is to reduce the minimum off-street parking apartment from 88 spaces to 12. I will explain that more later, the large discrepancy there. And then the second variance is to reduce the minimum stacking area requirement from 25 to 5 feet. Since there's a few things going on, I'll, I'll just kind of summarize up top. So the applicant, like I mentioned, is requesting approval for a residential care facility or an ALF. The facility will be limited to 39 residents maximum per our code. There was a previous conditional use for a similar use that has since expired. That's why they're back. The property has been vacant for several years. The applicant, as you'll see in the site plan, are proposing substantial site changes to prevent encroachments into right-of-way, improve landscaping and buffering, and add off-street parking for employees and visitors. And then due to site constraints with the kind of building configuration and site configuration, the applicant is requesting variances to both minimum parking and stacking. A little bit of site history, many of you are familiar with this property, but just to catch everyone up, in 1961, the site was developed as a nursing home. In 2004, there was a new conditional use approved for an ACLF, a congregate living facility. This approval has since expired. They actually had a maximum density grandfathered from the nursing home of 55 beds at that time. And then in 2016, there was a conditional use application for a drug and alcohol detox facility, and that was denied. Here's an aerial showing the site at 757565th Way North. This is the land use map. It is in the CRA, the Community Redevelopment District. As I mentioned, the zoning is B1, general commercial, and this is the flood insurance rate map. This is the proposed site plan. I know you can't see everything, but you can see an added drop-off area, new off-street parking lots, and quite a bit of landscaping being proposed. We'll run through the conditional use criteria for residential care facilities. So item A is obviously in progress with P&amp;Z and then City Council approval. There is a minimum lot area and minimum lot width requirement that this property does meet. Item C does not apply because there are no abutting residential zoning districts. And then item D, not less than 20% of the lot area shall be landscaped and retained as usable open space for occupants. This requirement is proposed to be met and kind of ties into the variance request that I mentioned. So to break those down and kind of explain the numbers a little bit briefly here, so most of the parking at the site right now is within the public right-of-way, which is not permitted, so we're removing that encroachment. The LDC requires parking as follows. Essentially, there are two formulas that are used. The first one gives a number of 10 spaces required for the site. The second one, just due to the internal configuration of the building, requires 88 spaces. So whichever is greater, and so we have to use the 88-space requirement. In researching and reviewing this request, in the ITE manual, they use a calculation for assisted living facilities of 0.39 spaces per resident, which works out to 15 spaces. And so the applicant, 12 is the maximum they've been able to provide on the site. It exceeds that lower calculation in our LDC, and it's roughly aligned with the ITE manual standards, so we're recommending approval. And then the second variance, a little bit simpler here, is just the minimum stacking area. So the LDC requires a 25-foot distance between the property line and the entrance to the first parking space for any new parking lots. Just due to the configuration of the site, where the building is, and meeting other LDC requirements, the applicant has had to request five feet for the stacking area for both their parking lots. The findings are as follows. Proposed use meets the intent of the B1 zoning district for the LDC. Proposed use meets all conditional use requirements and review criteria. Steph finds the variance to off-street parking requirements is appropriate for this particular site and proposed use. Steph finds the variance to minimum stacking area is appropriate, given the minimal traffic on the streets used to access these parking lots and the size of the parking areas. And the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan and the intent of the LDC. Steph recommends approval of these cases. At the January 4, 2024, meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this, of the conditional use case, with the condition that the 39-bed facility shall not be a drug treatment or rehabilitation center. P&amp;Z did not issue a recommendation on the variance cases for the LDC.
Question.
Thank you.
Can we do that legally?
You talking about the drug rehab?
Yeah.
It's already in the ordinance.
I don't care, but can we do that legally?
The definition of residential care facility does already exclude those, those uses.
All right. I just don't want to see this on federal court.
It will already not be one.
Okay.
Thank you. Item P3's, public hearing has been opened, so if the applicant would like to come forward and speak.
Yes, please.
Name and address for the record and whether you're sworn in or not.
My name is Anna Limonova. My address is 33689th Avenue South, St. Petersburg, 33702 Zippco, Florida. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna. Me and my family moved to Florida because of war, so we are working hard to bring our successful healthcare business to Florida, and we are fixing up the place, so we're trying to breathe in new life in the abandoned building in 757565th Way North. And we are repairing the roof. We are making it more energy efficient and taking care of permits for improvements. To meet the rules, we are adding more parking spaces on the backyard, and we also want to make the place look nice with landscaping and fresh coat of paint. Our goal is create a place where seniors can feel at home and well-cared-for. So we would like to open it as an assisted living facility for memory care, you know, with disabilities like dementia, Alzheimer's. We know how to take care of the people. So our team is ten, including administrators, kitchen staff, and cleaners, will keep things running smoothly. We are really appreciating any help or advice from you, and send you for your time. And we are really happy to be a part of your community.
Any questions for the applicant from City Council? Seeing none? Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come up and speak for or against or have any questions about this item? Seeing none? Close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Councilmember Bradbury.
Okay. What are you guys been doing? Gone. Okay. I need to make an approval on ordinance number 420... Where are we at here? Okay. Action approval. Make approval on conditional use. 0923-00012, public hearing, and final, first and final reading.
I'm bringing this reading glasses, but...
I didn't.
I have a motion and a second, I think, for Mr. Cadell? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to item P4, variance to reduce the minimum off-street parking. This...
That's correct. Item P4, a variance to reduce the minimum off-street parking requirement from 88 spaces to 12 spaces.
Are you ready?
Item P4, no, public hearing, first and final reading. This is also quasi-judicial. I am opening the public hearing and turning it over to Bob in case there's any additional information to add.
No additional information. I'd like to submit this presentation for the record for P4 as well.
Thank you. Any questions of City Council for Bob? We had a little bit of a discussion upstairs, and my concern was enough parking for staff and enough parking for those people's loved ones to be able to come and visit them. So I'm hoping that staff will be able to carpool and people will be able to use different modes of transportation to come and visit their loved ones, and maybe you can partner with some of the other businesses in the community if you need extra parking in the future or something. So that was my concern about it when I asked some questions of staff upstairs. So is there anybody in the audience that has any questions? I, I know the 88 spaces, that would depend on what type of business it was there. Staff said 50, or was it 33 for what it would be now?
What it would be, so what it's going, what would be approved for the variance would be 12. And note that the ITE, the transportation engineer's manual, does have 15 would be the number they recommend, so it's, it's fairly well-aligned with that.
Like a minimum of 15?
Yeah, like we just, they have just the number and you plug it in essentially for the lot. Yeah.
Okay. So the 12 isn't off from the 15, but...
It's, yes, essentially, yeah.
What is the 88 for? Is that for a different type of care facility?
Yeah. No, no, it's our, so the way our code is written, the parking calculation for residential care facilities, it basically says, calculate it this way, calculate it this way, and then whichever one is higher, you have to use that number. And just because of the way this building is broken down in, in the interior, that second requirement, the one per 100 square feet of non-residential space, there's a lot of space in this building that's not actually apartment units for residents, so that causes the 88-space requirement to be so high. But if you use just that 0.4 per assisted living unit count, you get 10. So 12 was the most that they were able to fit while meeting all the other LDC requirements and, and also retaining that 20% open space for residents to enjoy.
Like a congregate area for them to...
Yep, outdoor areas.
Open space and all that.
Trees, yep.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to ask any questions of this part of the variance or have any additional information to add? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion by Vice Mayor Reed.
Yes. Make a motion that we approve VAR-1224-00002, public hearing, first and final reading, quasi-judicial.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to item P5.
P5, a variance to reduce the minimum stacking area from 25 feet to 5 feet.
Thank you. Item P5, the variance to reduce the stacking is also quasi-judicial. Public hearing, first and final reading. I am opening the public hearing and turning it over to Bob to verify any additional information.
Nothing to add. I'd like to enter this slide and this presentation in the record for item P5 as well.
Thank you. As soon as you started talking about stacking, I thought it was like the drop-off area until I started looking and doing more research and then realized it was the stacking entering and exiting the parking lot.
Yeah.
Because I know the circular drive for drop-off... Because I know the circular drive for drop-off is shrunk also because of how much actual space is there.
There's using a lot in here, yes.
City Councils have any questions? No? Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions or needs to add any additional Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion by Vice Mayor Reed.
Make a motion that we approve VAR-1224-0003, public hearing first and final reading quasi-judicial.
Second motion.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Welcome to the neighborhood. Save me a room, will you? One with a window.
That's what I'm hoping. They're doing landscaping, so I'm hoping that they're going to configure all the ones that have windows for their, yeah, for the residents, so they can look outside. Moving on to item P6, ordinance number 4243.
Item P6, ordinance number 4243, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, amending Chapter 9, Traffic, Section 9-104 of the Code of the City of Pinellas Park pertaining to impoundment and towing of vehicles, amending the allowable rates to be charged for administrative fees, providing for the inclusion of such amended ordinance in the Code of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Item P6, ordinance number 4243's, public hearing, second and final reading. I am opening the public hearing and turning it over to Police Chief Adam.
Good evening, ma'am and council. Thank you for having me. Ordinance P6, number 4243, is a request to amend current section 9-104. What we did was we eliminated a lot of obsolete language that's already codified in the state statute that defines what are the requirements of wrecker companies, licensing requirements, equipment requirements, and the things like that. So we removed some obsolete language. Talked about rotor beam lights on the top of the cars that don't use those anymore. So we reinforced what the language should be. In addition, we're asking for a change in the procedure in which we utilize the rotation system. Currently, the goal of the rotation wrecker system is to clear the roadways as quickly and as safely as possible. We have a 30-minute time limit when we call a rotation wrecker out to remove a car. If they're not there within 30 minutes, we're now at the 60-minute window because we're ever going to call another company. So what we're proposing to change to eliminate the backups, opening the roadways, increasing the safety, is write a first refusal for the person on top of the tow list. For example, Company A gets called for a three-vehicle crash. If they can say, yes, we can respond, yes, we can remove all three vehicles, and we can do it all within 30 minutes, they will get all three, and then they will move to the bottom of the list. Should we call Company A and Company A says, I can only take two of the three, they'll get two, so on and so forth. It will expedite the removal, and it's also going to be more fair to the companies on the list because we do have a lot of rotation companies. We do allow anybody that meets the minimum standard to join the list. So it's to create a little more equity, but the most important thing for us is clearing the roadways and creating a safer environment for our folks. That's kind of the gist of C11, excuse me, of P6. What we did also was we removed the entire rate schedule from P6, and we're going to ask to codify that in consent on resolution. So that is all I have for P6, but I'm here for any questions you may have.
Do you want to also talk about P6 while you're here so that you don't have to come back up during consent agenda?
Totally up to you. If you're going to do P7, now I will.
P7, sorry.
That was P6. I also have a P7.
Okay. Then you're going to have to wait.
I will wait, ma'am, absolutely.
Well, we let our other staff do all of it once and then come back and say, you have any other questions? So, all righty. Does City Council have any questions of Adam on item P6? Vice Mayor Reed?
No.
No? Okay, well then, hold on. See, she's wanting to go too. No. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on item P6? I do have somebody that would like to come up and speak. Mr. Morrison?
Mayor, City Council, and efforts by the Police Department. My name is Morrison Johnson, Jr. My address is 54552nd Street South in St. Petersburg, Florida. I'm the president for the Professional Wrecker Operators of Florida. And on behalf of our members at due service in Pinellas Park, I want to thank everyone for their efforts put forth in trying to move this forward. I know it's been a little bit since the rates have been increased. The industry has taken a hard hit, and unfortunately, the last couple of years has kept me extremely busy in the cities and the counties throughout the state of Florida. I've been in Tallahassee the last seven weeks, working on legislation as well. But on behalf of our members and PWF, I want to thank everybody for the efforts that everybody's put forth in order to get this where it is today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, Vice Mayor Reed?
I make a motion that we.
Oh, closing the public hearing, sorry.
Make a motion that we pass ordinance number 4243, public hearing second and final reading.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item P7.
Item P7, ordinance number 4244, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, pertaining to the impoundment of motor vehicles used to facilitate certain crimes within city limits, amending Chapter 16 of the Code of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, pertaining to offenses to add a new section 16-126, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Item P7, ordinance number 4244's, public hearing second and final reading. I am opening the public hearing and turning it over to Police Chief Adam.
Thank you, ma'am. Adam Geisemacher, Police Chief. First, thank you for the hard work from everyone that was involved with putting this together to get us to where we're at right now. We are asking to amend Chapter 16 to add a new section specifically for enumerated offenses in which people are using a motor vehicle in our city and committing crimes. It's not all-encompassing, and I'm going to, for the record, the offenses in which this new ordinance or this amended ordinance would affect would be the ability for the Police Department to impound any motor vehicle used in the commission of an offense, and I'm going to read here in a moment, that is either the owner, co-owner, or an occupant of the vehicle that is the owner or the co-owner during the commission of said offense. offenses include driving under influence, reckless driving, street racing, violation of State Statute 893, which talks about controlled substances, other drug-related offenses, the facilitation of the act or the attempted act of solicitation or prostitution, use of the motor vehicle to meet a minor or traveling to meet a minor for sexual activity, use of the vehicle to facilitate unnatural or lascivious acts, human trafficking, exposure of sexual organs. What this ordinance will allow us to do is to attempt to prevent offenses like this from occurring in our neighborhoods, in our community, as a deterrent. And the deterrent is a $500 administrative penalty assessed to the owner, co-owner of the vehicle that was in the vehicle during the commission of these offenses that must be paid to us, the City of Pinellas Park, prior to being released by the contracted tow company that takes the impound. This would not apply to stolen vehicles, and this would not apply to those that are covered under the Florida Contraband Seizure Act, Forfeiter Act. This $500 civil penalty may be contested. Due process is absolutely important in this case. The city attorney has helped us tremendously with this. They have the right to a due process hearing. We do have a special hearing master that has been selected by our city attorney that will hear these cases. So in the event that they challenge the due process, or ask for due process, the only thing they are permitted to challenge is whether or not the officer had probable cause at the time of the offense to enact the provisions in 16126. Should the hearing master say, we did not, then the car gets returned and the 500, there's no $500 fee paid. Should they find probable cause, they can ask for the Sixth Circuit Circuit to get involved, the courts, but now we're talking about exponential cost to the violator. With that said, the Police Department respectfully requests council to consider and pass this amendment, 16126 of our Code.
City Councils have any questions? I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Briefly. If the owner of the vehicle is not aware of what the person is that's driving it that they lent the vehicle to, would they have to pay that $500 fee?
No, so the owner.
Would they have to pay for the towing of that vehicle and for its storage?
Yes.
Because of somebody else.
They currently.
Bad in their car.
Yeah, so currently, under our laws as written, they are, if they want their car back, they have to come to the Police Department. We release the form to them. They have to go to the contracted vendor, and they have to pay them. That's between them and the company. In this case, if, if son is 20 years old, is driving the car, mom is in the front passenger seat, and she knows or has a reasonable.
Well, no, mom's sitting at home. That's what I'm at.
Then this does not apply. The owner of the vehicle has to be present or operating the vehicle for this to be applicable.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Please? Public hearing is open. It was open. Just open.
Hello, my name is Sheila Hamilton. I'm at 534185th Terrace North, Pinellas Park, Florida. I just have one question. Does the language also include rental vehicles as well? Because I know that's a serious issue, especially when you go out to rent a car. Most of the times, that's, a lot of times, that's what they do. They rent a car and then do whatever they're going to do in that.
Not, not trying to be funny, but unless the owner of Hertz is in the car, we can't, it would imply.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you. I need to come out to our meetings quite often, so thank you for coming out every once in a while. Is there anybody else in the audience that has any questions? You guys in the back are good? Good. I'm getting thumbs up, so.
She's looking like he's got a stomach problem.
All righty. Vice Mayor Reed?
Oh, yeah.
Your light's on, so it's you.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass ordinance number 4244, public hearing second and final reading.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to section four of our consent agenda items.
Item C1, authorization for the mayor to sign master agreements for continuing contract planning consulting services for RFP 23-006. Item C2 is approved the selection of Mayor Bradbury to serve on the Evaluation Committee for review and evaluation of proposals for RFP 23-010, Building Co-Professional Services Continuing Contract. Item C3 is authorization for the City of Pinellas Park to accept utility easement from Sunny City LLC for the property located at 5745 Park Boulevard. Item C4 is authorization for the City of Pinellas Park to accept utility easement from Sunny City LLC for the property located at 5745 Park Boulevard. Item C5 is Resolution Number 24-03, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, declaring city-owned property to be surplus and of no use or benefit to the city, providing for appeal of resolutions in conflict therewith to the extent of such conflict, providing for an effective date. Item C6 is consideration of a request for the mayor to sign a final plat approval for Pinellas Groves Lot 9 Replat located at parcel numbers 10-30-1671010-300-0901 and 10-30-1671010-300-0902 Item C7, approved the appointment of James Elias to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire July 31st, 2026. Item C8 is approved the appointment of Trish Lee to fill a teen library board member position with a term to expire June 30th, 2024. Item C9 is the authorization for the purchase of March Network video recorders to replace current obsolete CCTV recorders from Empire Computer and Consulting Incorporated at a total cost of $110,695.70. Item C10 is Resolution Number 24-04, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, authorizing the expenditure of funds collected from civil penalties imposed pursuant to Section 16-126 of the City of Pinellas Park Code of Ordinances for specific purposes, requiring the Pinellas Park Chief of Police review and approve all proposed expenditures in accordance with this resolution, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Item C11 is Resolution Number 24-05, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, establishing tow rates for wrecker services, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. C12 is authorization to purchase under Florida Sheriff's Association Contract Number FSA-23 VEH 21.01 2025 International MV 607 4x2 for Public Works Stormwater Department from Sun State International TRKS LLC at a cost of $131,118 to be charged to the appropriate account. And that concludes tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Reed, one more time.
Thank you, Mayor Bradbury. Regarding the consent agenda, I would like to make a motion to pass, approve, or adopt whichever action is appropriate. Items C1 through C12, inclusive with items C5, C10, and C11 being first and final reading. The next public hearing will be held in council chambers on Thursday, February 22nd, 2024 at 16:00.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Anybody in the audience that has any questions on item C1 through C12? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to Section 5, which is regular agenda. We do not have any. Moving on to Section 6, comments from City Council and staff.
I thought Dan was going to talk. I'm sorry. I, not a whole lot, other than thoughts and prayers to Trooper Fink and his family. You know, just thinking about them, take a moment for, for his family. And thoughts and prayers for Keith Seville's wife is in surgery, I think, this evening. So just take a moment for that. Hope everything comes out, and if they need anything, as always, the village family is available. So, and I think that's all I've got.
Rick?
I don't have anything this evening.
Yep. Clerk's office. Ms. Lada?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Lots going on. We have the Pinellas Park Swap Meet going on February 18th, beginning at 6:00 a.m. in the morning till 2:00 p.m. That's at England Brothers Park. That is benefiting the Pinellas Park Public Education Foundation. And then we have Cirque Masseo Horse Show, which is back again. It will be at England Brothers Park, February 23rd through 25th. We also have an indoor garage sale at the Senior Center, and that's February 28th, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. We still have a few tickets left for the Olivia Show. That's a tribute to Olivia Newton-John at the Pinellas Park Performing Arts Center, and that is Saturday, March 9. We don't have a Fourth Saturday block party this month in the Art District due to renovations that they're doing in the area. And then, of course, Country in the Park in Chili Blaze. Chili Blaze is coming up, March 15th at England Brothers Park at 6:00. Country in the Park is the very next day, Saturday, the 16th, beginning at 12:00 at England Brothers Park. We have the headliner of Chris Jansen. We are currently signing up sponsors and vendors to Country in the Park. And for more information on anything that I went over, you can always go to pinellas-park.com or our social media, City of Pinellas Park or What's Happening in Pinellas Park. That's all I have. I will just mention that we have a vacancy on both the Parks and Rec Board as well as the Library Board for anyone interested in becoming involved and participating in either of those. And also, we'll mention a private rental of the Equestrian Arena this Saturday, Sunday, excuse me, but if you're interested in watching some horse demonstrations and the kids strutting their stuff and all the different prances and such, come on out and watch the event this Sunday.
Let me ask you a question really quickly. You have the volunteer board.
Mm-hmm.
And we have two lovely teens, one tonight, and then another one at our last council meeting. If there's a teen, a third teen that wants to be involved instead of the adult, will you guys consider?
Well, we do follow the rules as outlined in the board ordinances, but if they're 18, they qualify, so.
So we could potentially accept someone who's 18.
Keith, you don't want to brag. Wonderful event this morning. Thank you. That's it. Good group. Ms. LaSharon, anything? No. Dan?
I have a question.
Yeah?
Uh, can a city employee be on one of the volunteer board?
A retired city employee, yes. But that's active now.
Active, no?
Actually, I know that we have had city employees on, as long as it is not a decision-making board. P and Z, B O A, no. Rec, library, all that, yes.
There you go.
Out there.
Sorry.
Time to have a little fun.
Rosa Free used to be on the Equestrian Board, so, for many, many years. I forgot one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the big election is coming up, March 19th. So the registration, voter registration deadline is February 20th. So I just wanted to put that out because it's before the next council meeting. So if you're not registered to vote, make sure you register, change your address, whatever you need to do so you are in the right place to vote for the city.
So they don't have to do them by hand?
Correct.
You know, I think we missed, did we say something about Mr. Dudley, Jim Dudley? The fireman? You know, we have, uh, there's a service for him coming up. I can't remember the date. Oh, okay. Good.
All right, we're turning it over to the chiefs over there.
Yeah, so, uh, formerly, uh, fire, uh, for, former firefighter, fire inspector, uh, fire lieutenant Jim Dudley passed away a couple of weeks ago. Uh, his service will be, uh, Tuesday, the 13th at 1:00 p.m. Um, anybody that knew him, you know, Jim was a big, big part of the fire department for a long time. He was a fire lieutenant, um, he was a union, union vice president, union president for a long time. He was one of the founders of the local 2193 Benevolent Fund, which originally started out as a fund to assist firefighters from local 2193 that were having problems. Um, and it really expanded very quickly into, uh, citizen assistance. They're there. He was, he was the one guy, he was at every fire. Uh, he had a pager, and he came to every fire, uh, made sure if families needed, uh, some money to stay the night, things like that, that they were able to get those funds. Uh, he was big, uh, on our, all our M D A stuff. So, uh, yeah, he was a big part of this department for a long time, and so, appreciate it, Rick, you bringing that up. Hope you're going to be there?
Yeah.
Good.
And it's going to be at what church?
I'm sorry, it's at the PAC.
At the Performing Arts Center. Thank you so much.
Art Center, yes. My apologies.
Chief? Talked enough today? Unless I'm... Oh, I know. Was that awesome? That is amazing. That was awesome. And if they will pan in, we have these lovely little Valentine items that they put together. We see a cute, absolutely adorable little animal over there in front of Rick's. The Teen Works Groups put these together. Um, they're $5 apiece, and this is another way that they raise money. They do Valentine's Day, they did it at Christmas. They do have a few left because they've been going fast over at the Forbes Rec Center and over at the Senior Center. So $5 or more for donation to the Teen Works. And obviously, you can see these, uh, young men and women and know that the money that you're donating is going to a good cause. They always have, um, the citizens in mind when they're doing any of their activities. So please always go out and help sponsor them, and you can tell what a wonderful group of young men and women that we have here. And we need to broadcast that more. So, anything else for the good of the order? We hope that everybody has a blessed couple of weeks until we meet again. We need to adjourn.